So I'd like to commence the Select Board meeting of February 16th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. And we're going to begin with three executive session items. So if the Assistant Town Administrator could read the executive session portion of the agenda, please.
Good evening. So item number one is meeting with Town Council in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, and Suffolk Construction versus Decamp 449 Mass. 444, 2007, to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street, Igor Labasti Atel versus the Town of Sherwin, Land Court Number 21, Miscellaneous PS 000193 (HPS), and 31 Hunting Lane LLC versus Sherwin Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee Number 2021-05, and 41 North Main Street LLC versus Sherwin Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee Number 2021-06, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21 (A) and 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7 (26), discuss privileged email from Town Council regarding litigation. Item number two is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board and the town, and the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five-star building corp versus the town of Sherwin pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decamp 449 Mass. 444 (2007), the library. Item number three is strategy session to prepare for contract non-bargaining employees pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A and 2 by a chief contract. You will need a second and a roll call.
Okay, does anyone have any amendments to the executive session agenda? Hearing none, I do declare that we need to discuss these three items in executive session. So I'd like a second.
Second.
Second, and the roll call vote. Marian?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well.
After I read the agenda, the board can vote to either amend or approve the agenda. There was a public comment section, but I've had nobody ask me for a public comment for tonight. Items can be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated for 48 hours in advance can be added. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the Town Administrator payroll warrant, the draft minutes of January 5th, 2023, and our next scheduled Select Board meeting of March 2nd, 2023. Item number two is to consider moving the March 2nd, 2023 Select Board meeting due to caucus being held that night. Item number three is considerations of acceptance of grants and donations from Liz Anderson, our library director, from the Mass Cultural Council Sector Recovery Grant in the amount of $38,870, and various donations in memory of Sally Willis. Our next item will be ARPA funds, request for approval to release the funds, and Sean Kalin will be here to discuss the Farm Pond Stormwater Pathway Project. And there will also be an update on the ARPA allocation summary. Number five is annual time meeting 2024. We're here to discuss the longevity article, and Vicky Relus, Chair of the Personnel Board, will be here to discuss that, and then any other possible articles that may need to be reviewed by the Select Board for tonight. Item number six is consideration of routine business, which is Select Board reports and the Town Administrative reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Are there any suggestion revisions to the agenda? Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
I move to approve the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marian?
Aye.
I'm back on, Jeff.
Okay, Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
That was Paul. Seconded by Marian. Marian?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you. So on the agenda, we've listed the March 2nd is the night of the caucus, and it's our next, it's two weeks from tonight, so it would normally be our next Select Board meeting. My concern is that if we don't meet that night, then we wouldn't meet till the week after, which would be March 9th, and that would be almost a month from tonight, little less than a month. So what Diane and I talked about today is what if we decided, if we have a pretty light agenda for March 2nd, what if we, this caucus, I believe, starts at 7:30. Is that right, Diane? Is it 7:00 or 7:30? Do you know? You're muted.
I spoke with Jackie, and she told me caucus actually starts at 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock. So what if we met at 6:00 or 6:30 on a regular night, and then just went to caucus, you know, at 7:45 or something like that? Would that be acceptable to people?
I could do a, I could do a 6 on a, for a one, on a one-time thing.
Yes, the only reason is that way we don't get off schedule, and we might have a few items that can't wait till the 9th of March.
If people are going to caucus, do you want to meet in person at town meeting too?
I thought of that already. I would be up for that. The only disadvantage is we probably should meet at Town Hall, because the caucus people will be milling about there for...
Well, yeah, we would meet at Town Hall, but then saying at the community, and then walk over to, I assume the caucus is at the community center.
Yes.
Yes.
Although I contemplated if the library's out, maybe we could meet in the first floor of community center. But yes.
So I'll say that, um, I know you talk about being on schedule. We are off schedule, what we were three months ago. At some point, I felt when it was a winter, I don't know if it was the Christmas break or whatever, we did off a week. I mean, that's all, can remember we're not first and third, or second and fourth, that were every other week. It's my preference to actually, unless there's something critical, unless there's something, if it's just administrative stuff, to actually meet on a ninth and resume every other week after that point. And that's just, because I have certain personal obligations, that that every other week works better for me personally. That's what we used to do. We went off of it, I think during Christmas.
I think it was the New Year's, it was the December 29th or whatever. It was the, we would have met on December 29th, and we didn't have anything. So that's why.
Maybe do a short meeting on the second. I still would like to meet on the ninth and resume every other week from the ninth moving forward.
Well, we can't do that, because the reason why we could maybe do it in April is we have the, March 18th, we have the all-day advisory public hearing. So we have a meeting on the 60th, the next meeting would be the 16th of March, which might be convenient, because it's two days before the advisory public hearing. We wouldn't meet again before the advisory public hearing if we did that.
Well, yeah, we'd actually meet on the ninth, and nine plus, I see what you're saying. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. We wouldn't meet.
If you think it's critical to meet a few days ahead of time, that's fine, or you simply pick both days. I don't know. You know what I mean? Just because it, um, I don't know, because of the 16th. When does the warrant close? Does a warrant close on the 16th?
We can sign it on the 16th. We, Jackie, we, Diane and I discussed that with Jackie today. We can discuss, we can sign the warrant on the night of the 16th, and we continue to meet that night.
Okay, is that when it closes officially?
Well, we're deciding that.
Okay. Well, like I said, I have a personal preference on resuming the off weeks that were, that's proposed on this schedule as before us. So that's just my preference. However that happens, it's just something that would work with my personal schedule better.
Jeremy, do you have a solution for us?
No, I just wanted to just clarify that the warrant is actually closed, but on the, you know, on, you need to vote on the wording of the warrant on, on a particular night.
And we have to sign it.
Yeah.
Or delegate Jeremy to sign it for us. So what say you, Marian or Paul or George?
Well, I should, most Thursday nights anyway, so, um, I, I don't really care. Whatever works better. If it works better for Eric to switch to that ninth schedule, I would prefer to do that for him.
Yeah, that's a good thing. I'm just trying to juggle it around the advisory hearing and caucus. So why don't we do this? I propose that, why don't we let Diane look and see if we have some things that can't wait till March 9th, and we'll meet on the second, and she'll let us know, but we'll meet at 6:00 or 6:30. But if we're able to avoid it, then we'll just meet on March 9th. Does that make sense?
Or, I have a suggestion here. We could do the second, the 16th, if you want to meet right before.
Yeah.
Advisory, and then simply after the, it might be an advantage after that meeting on the 18th, make the next one a 23rd, and then resume.
I like that plan even better. I think that's a good plan.
Because then you're meeting right before and right after.
Correct.
That'll be three weeks, so we'll love each other, meeting four times in 10 days.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good idea. Jackie, tell us why it's not.
No, that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I, I think that the latest that you guys should sign the warrant or vote to sign the warrant is the 16th.
Okay.
Traditionally, five, I've looked at, when I was discussing this with Diane, I looked at past history, and it's traditionally five weeks before the town meeting, and I think because the advisory meeting, it's probably, it's a good idea for you guys to sign the warrant before that. That's my opinion, anyone.
Yeah, that's a good opinion, I think. So, and we could do it on the second. So Eric's proposal, which I actually like way better, is that we go ahead and meet on the second for a short agenda before caucus, and then we don't meet again till the 16th. So it'll be two weeks. Then we have advisory hearing, then we meet a week later, and then we go to the, his preferred two-week cycle. How do people feel about that?
I agree in accommodating Eric's schedule. I'm available all Thursdays, so it doesn't matter which Thursdays.
We're not meeting, we're not meeting every week. Oh, I don't care what you think, so.
So happy to accommodate him.
I'll count what Eric said as a motion. Marian, will you second it for me?
Yeah, second.
All right, Marian?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And I am I as well. I think that's a great conclusion. So thank you.
Jeff, could you just affirm which is the date after the advisory hearing that we're meeting?
I think he said it was the 23rd, whatever would be Thursday. The advisory is the 18th, so whatever that Thursday would be.
23rd, okay.
And there sometimes do come, things come up right after advisory, because what happens is advisory then has to write up, Georgia and I had to do this many times, write up the warrant right away. So there might be something that, you know, comes up. So probably is convenient to have a meeting a week after our other meeting, but if something comes up in the advisory public hearing. It can be a very brief agenda if it's not.
Okay.
You got it?
Yep. Could I bring up one other calendar issue?
Uh, sure.
In April, yeah, the, the town meeting is on the 25th.
Yes.
And the schedule says we meet at 6:30 before town meeting. I seem to recall a discussion we had earlier about starting a little, starting town meeting a little earlier in order to get it in one night. What was decided on that?
I don't know. Jackie, is that, where are we on that?
Uh, that's your decision. As far as I know, we're starting at 7:00, but if you guys wanted to start early, that would be your decision.
Well, I mean, we'd have to gauge the size of the warrant.
Right.
I think it seems to be a crazy long warrant. The only two-thirds of the write-up, at least, or three-quarters is the solar zoning, the planning board article is huge.
Yeah.
Right, and we should check with the town moderator.
Yeah, that's true, George.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I have, because we did discuss it at a previous meeting, and the consensus was start earlier, but, you know, we can reconsider.
Okay. Go ahead, Jackie.
Sorry. I just wanted to say I have discussed it with Mary quite extensively, and she seems to think that we can finish in one night, but.
With a seven clock start?
I can, yeah, but I can discuss it with her. I can, you know, we're, we're having the motions meeting, March 27th, and so I think we'll have a better idea if, if we need to move it earlier than that.
Yeah, and Jeannie makes a good point also.
After advisory and the motion, and motions meeting.
Yeah, and Jeannie made the point in the chat that, you know, people might have a hard time getting off work if they're commuting now to be there early.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, I think you may need to decide on the time prior to the motions meeting, in that it's printed in the, on the warrant itself, that you'll be voting either March 2nd or March 16th. They should have a decision prior to that.
He's right.
Okay. Well, we can do it. Why can't we do it on the second? That would be too late?
Deciding on the second? I don't, I don't think so.
I think we should just start at 7:00, unless you see an obstacle. I think we should just start at 7:00 and not create a hassle.
Okay.
Is that all right, Jackie?
Yeah, yes, I think so. I mean, Mary's gonna do everything she can to do consent agendas and, and move things along.
Yep, yep.
You know, there's, there's not that much controversial on there. I think the collector, treasurer thing will be some discussion, and the solar will be a long discussion, but I'm not sure about a ton of the other articles.
I agree. Okay, thank you. And Liz Anderson, you're next to talk about grants and donations. Always a good subject. You gotta unmute yourself, though, if you're gonna talk about it.
That would help. Sorry about that. Okay, yes, good, good place to start. So we were very thrilled to find out that we were granted funding from the Mass Cultural Council, and they just announced they were giving out about $51 million in COVID recovery funds this year. So we weren't really expecting to get anything. They were gonna give between $5,000 and $75,000. So we found out we received $38,870, and it does seem pretty flexible, so we can spend that on, you know, it's a, it's a wide range of, of items that we can spend that on. So I would propose that you could accept the Mass Cultural Council's unrestricted operating grant through the Cultural Sector Recovery Grants for organizations in the amount of $38,870 for the use of the Sherwin Library.
Paul just made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Marian?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And Paul? And I am I as well. Thanks, Liz, and then you're gonna talk about the other donations for Sally Willis?
Great, yes. So we also receive, have received many donations in the memory of Sally Willis, who has been a massive library supporter and her family. So we, you know, we were very honored to be mentioned in her obituary, that people could send donations to the library in lieu of flowers. So I am making the motion to accept the memorial fund donations in Sally Willis's name for the Sherwin Library in the amount of $8,166.
Terrific. So do I have a motion for that? Paul, you're good at accepting money. Marian, will you second?
Second, yes, of course.
All right, Marian?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul? Eric?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank the donors. Okay, the next item is the ARPA funding, and Sean, you're on deck to tell us about the pathway at Farm Pond. And even, even gave us the right background to, to, to see it.
I did. So I was ready to bring this. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
Um, I think a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, when there was a little bit of confusion of what was left. So we, we tapped the brakes a little. You guys have in your packet, I don't, I don't know if it's worth sharing, but what we have is a proposal from Stantec, which is a trusted engineering firm that's done a lot of work for us. You'll remember that when we were going through the ARPA funding, you know, the initial kind of blocks of money, they had brought forward redoing the pathway that goes up and over the hill to Farm Pond, to the beach from the, from the parking lot. So that was, that was put into the kind of reserved ARPA money. Since then, and the Select Board didn't vote to release that, they voted to kind of, kind of hold that money. Since then, what, what we did, myself and Jeannie, reached out to Stantec. And again, this is, Stantec is the firm now that had several of the engineers over the past few decades. It was Norfolk Ram and a few other companies that have essentially done all the stormwater work that the town has done. All the consulting we've done on the boat ramp, on the paths, like, you know, there's a path that goes down, there's workout on, on Lake Street, both at the top of the boat ramp on Lake Street and down on the corner where the hydrant is between Artemis and Murgison's.
Yep.
There's a rain garden down there. So Stantec and Norfolk Ram have done all that. So they have all the archives of the files that we have. And what they did is they, one of the engineers came onto the site, walked it with us, had a surveyor look at it, to look at, look at the path and what it's gonna take. And the, the goal here isn't just to create a new path, that's not, that's not just better, but to fix a lot of issues, which of course you have to do at this point, which is the, you know, what I call the stormwater. The runoff from that path has a very detrimental effect of, on the beach, and obviously on the water quality, because the water is rushing off of that path at a, at a pretty high rate. So for obvious reasons, that's a fair amount of work. We're gonna, obviously the design of the path will have some switchbacks in it, and in, and in each turn, you'll have basically like a rain garden. So the, the proposal here, the engineers, which includes the, the survey and all the topo work that has to be done, meeting with conservation, and filing all the DEP paperwork for the, for the notice of intent to the, to the, their, their fee would be $72,500. So what we're asking is to release either that, or, or, you know, somewhere maybe just north of that, to make sure we have some contingency. That will get us the design, and then during that process, we'll probably be able to get some estimates. Without a design, we can't estimate what it's gonna cost. And that'll open up the opportunity both to button up what we do with the rest of the ARPA that was asked for. And of course, there's, there's several different avenues for grants for work around Farm Pond. Everyone probably remembers my preaching about phosphorus reduction and the MS4. This is not an area of town that is part of the regulated area. So while the efforts for the MS4 and phosphorus reduction don't include Farm Pond, it actually opens the door for, you know, a different type of funding sources from the state, which we've, we've successfully used before, and we probably will again. And the, the name is slipping my tongue, and Jeremy's laughing. I, I'm confident he knows which, which grant I'm thinking of.
Yeah, it's a 319 grant from.
Thank you.
But definitely the runoff.
You can't use for compliance. It sucks, by the way. You can't use them to meet compliance for your NFTs thing.
Right. And we wouldn't be, but we could use them for this, correct?
Marian raised, are you finished, Sean?
Sure.
Marian finished first, or raised her hand first.
Yeah, I didn't quite catch the letters that Jeremy referred to in this grant. What came to my mind right away was an MVP grant. Is that what you said? No?
No, he said 319 grant, which is, which is specific to the.
Stormwater or?
It's federal. Yeah, 319 is for water quality. It's EPA water quality grant.
Okay. But MVP might be another source.
It could be. It could also be a source for the top of the ramp, where it's associated with the roadwork. This, the efforts here, when we bring the surveyor in, it's included that they'll do the topo of the parking lot area where it's adjacent to Lake Street, since they're gonna be in there. So we'll combine that effort. But the design work we talked about at the top of the ramp, when we, when we change the gates, will be somewhat of a different project.
So Paul had his hand raised, although where did Paul go? He disappeared. So I guess he doesn't have his hand raised anymore. She said, the rain, Jeannie put a chat, we received 319 grant to do the rain gardens in the boat ramp last time, Jeannie said. So Paul had a question, but he's not, he may come back in. We'll see if he does or not. So what did you say? Should we make it like 70 grand, 75 grand? What did you say was 73, 250 or something? I forget.
It was 72, 500. I, I think you probably should leave a little contingency in there, in case the surveying, it's a little bit dated. We had, we had contemplated doing this prior to, ironically, we were, we, we thought the surveyor should get in before the snow cover this fall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, neither happened. But, uh, you know, the, the dates were stacked up in an effort to try to get ahead of the season. We're obviously not gonna even try to permit this before the season.
Yeah.
But, but I, I think you should probably go to 80,000.
We'd have to double, if we do that, we'd just have to double check what's left in the ARPA funding. I'm pretty sure we had a little bit.
Well, the, the reserve, I believe, was 125, or maybe 150. I think that's the next item.
We've eaten through that. If we, I remember, I don't have it in front of me, but the summary that we looked at two weeks ago was less than that. It's more around 75 left, I think.
No, this money was accounted for in what you.
No, your money was in there, but I mean, if we're gonna increase your money, I don't think it was.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not even asking for all the money. The money was, was north of 100,000.
Oh, I see.
I think it might have been 150, actually.
I misunderstood what you said. I think you're correct. Jeremy, do you, do you have the numbers?
Yeah, and sorry for not including the summary in, in the packet. We did send that around via email, but we did earmark. The last update you saw, there was an earmark for $110,000 for this project. So at the request of 80,000 is, is affordable. It's within what you've earmarked for this project.
You think that's adequate, or should we do 85 then? If we're, there's a lot of ledge there, I know that, but you're doing the surface mainly.
Yeah, well, this won't be building it. This is just engineering it.
Yeah. All right. So you think we should approve 80,000?
I think so.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I just have a comment, just whatever. It's not, it's not a huge deal, but engineering, things like this with a lot of unknowns, I just prefer, especially above $20,000, I prefer to see him TMN with, with, not to exceed price versus a lump sum. I think 72,000 has so many unknowns that in general, I don't like to see lump sums, but that's about it.
But we don't have to lump sum with the engineering firm. We're just giving him authorization of funding, right?
Yeah, with the contract we have in force and our background materials, a lump sum 72,000.
Yeah.
I don't, actually, I think we're gonna modify that, because most of the contracts we have are, are task-based.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'll meet with Jeremy on that. I, I don't, I don't think we'd actually sign this the way it is. I expect that to be a not to exceed.
Okay. So do I, you wanna make a motion then, Eric, for 80 grand is what he's requested?
I'm sure. I move that we, well, what do we vote the first time? Because, you know, I'm, I'm the anti-ARPA guy. I'll let someone else also make the motion. You know, I'm the one that wants to spend this on like cars and vehicles.
On the line.
I'm like, you almost caught me there. Make a statement.
I move to authorize up to $80,000 of ARPA funding for engineering plans.
For the walkway at Farm Pond.
Yeah.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, Eric.
I give it a second.
Okay, thank you, George. Marian?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well, and Paul is. And I am as well, and Paul is still MIA, so it's four to zero. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be swimming around checking it out, you know. So uh, the next item is um. Annual town meeting and the first sub bullet is Vicky Relas talking about the longevity article. Hi, Vicky.
Hi, everyone.
Sorry for uh taking so long, we got to you finally.
That's, that's okay, I get it, it's a lot of things we have to work on, you have to work on. Um, the uh longevity warrant that you have in your packet is what we will be. Including um in the overview for town meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions, uh needed any clarification. Um, basically, this was a group effort. Um, Personnel Board as well as Deb Seifring and Diane and. Other people within the town, um, we got everybody's input. Uh, we looked at other towns and what they're doing as well and um, kinda came up with some um. Numbers that everybody felt were comparable and um, at this point, we're, we're uh. We're good for a starting point for year one, this will be for fiscal year twenty four.
Terrific, does uh anyone on the select board have any uh? Points or questions for Vicky?
Also, I attended one of the personnel board meetings and the incorporated stuff, I like the way they made it, uh, what do you call it, cost of living adjusted for the various amounts. And um, I remember there's some questions, I didn't attend the more recent one, but the previous one about. You know, what if someone goes part-time, full-time, this and that, and there's a lot of texts there, it covers pretty much every scenario I can think of.
Yeah, we tried it, it's been back and forth to town council quite a bit. This version that you see here is their latest version, um Personnel Boards reviewed it and we feel comfortable with what. Town Council has come up with, um, they looked at every possible option as well and uh for um. For our first out uh as a warrant, um, it's pretty thorough and it will be pretty effective uh for the employees.
Yeah, like I said, I think I have most scenarios, I guarantee there will be some scenario in the next ten years that you haven't thought of.
Oh, I'm sure. There always is.
Not many, not many.
No, it's, it's a, but it's, it's a very encouraging thing for uh ensuring that we don't lose good people, so.
I think it's the beginning of people to understand how much we appreciate their work.
Yeah. I think that's key, so, thank you for doing all the um. Blocking and tackling that went in that that people don't see and.
It was my pleasure, we, we uh, I'm glad we got this together enough to get it through for this year. Thank you.
So we don't need to vote on it, cause we already voted on the article, so I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then the uh next uh. Bullet is labeled possibly other articles, that Eric's got an article, I think he wants to talk about, is that right, Eric?
Yeah, I said it late this afternoon, but I might not have got, I gotten to um everyone, I um. So basically, Dan and I met on the uh, are discussed on the assessors issue there. Um, we kind of simplified it, we took out the thing about recruiting. And other things like that, and I'll simply read what we drafted right now, and if people um. Are on board more or less on the intent or what we're trying to up for a pro uh. You know, get here, then I think we can make something final by the next meeting, even the second. Basically broke into two sections, really honestly, like two paragraphs, really one sentence in one paragraph. Um, talking about one as a global thing about qualifications, cause there was some question about, okay, someone has quals or certifications. So actually I put a general sentence says, any applicant for the Board of Ass- uh Assessors shall demonstrate basic qualifications of one of the more, one of the more following. Finance, law, government, real estate appraisal and art construction. So those are the general qualities want to see, and actually we'll go somewhere earlier in the, in the description to cover essentially anyone in the Board of Assessors. Um, and that's, you know, in or out of town, which which makes sense, and I think it's currently the case. Then the part about the the um town resident. Of the three positions on the Board of Assessors, Assessors, the Select Board shall appoint one Sherburne resident through a prescribed advertised process. If a qualified resident candidate is not available, then the Select Board is authorized to appoint a non-resident. At the next vacancy, the um, the Select Board shall attempt to hire a Sherburne resident. Actually, it's actually at the next vacancy, the attempt to hire a Sherburne resident should be repeated, so the next time there's an opening, so instead of. You know, being terms and someone automatically gets bumped, next time someone steps off. You know, if there's no qualified Sherburne residents, then there'll be another search for Sherburne resident. Instead of before, talk about recruitment, which I think was a very difficult language, cause we're not really recruiters. But we have made good effort to make a prescribed process in general for, you know, um volunteers and for um. You know, filling in these boards and someone like that. Um.
So that's good now, is that you, you mentioned the experience that you're the two or three category, four categories. Did you also include anything, you talked with me a few times about maybe a certification, like if they. Joined, then they would, the resident would have to. Get certified or somehow take a a course or whatever, is that still in there or no?
Yeah, so, um, what's that, I reached out to um, to Wendy a little bit on some certifications and we're just playing phone tag right now, I think she's on vacation. But at some point, we're like.
On here tonight, but she jumped off, I think.
And this is some, so I was thinking, this is just me thinking, so I want to vet it around before I have an open discussion about it. You know, should certifications happen so many months afterwards? And one thing about the Sherman resident, there's a lot of focus on the qualification of server resident and certifications. I believe whether you're a resident or not, it should be independent, it should go to all, all the members, so that's why I want to talk. To Wendy and talk to Nancy and see how realistic that is, so if it, there's a certain certification, should that happen within six months? If it does not happen within six months, do you have to step off? What's the ramifications of that? Through all the board members, and I want to bet that a bit more, I think the only reason is, there was some concern, sorry. You know, some concern on a Sherburne resident is making sure they had qualifications to it, that it wasn't just residency gave it entitlement, it wasn't by right.
Yeah.
I believe though, if you put certain like, if it's subjective qualifications, like I just read. Are objective, like a, like a certification. It should go to all members, and I want to clear that with Wendy and Nancy before I, I actually put something right in there, but I would like to know from the board. Is the intent or the direction that we're going here. Appropriate with you, such that I can bring something more final um. With exactly where this language will go and stuff like that for the second.
So Marion, do you want to go first?
Uh, yeah, Eric, uh, if someone is appointed from out of town. Uh, that has no certifications. Uh, what would be the basis for appointing an outside person that is uh? It would be, it's a little bit easier to narrow the field if for out of town people. You require some sort of experience in assessing or certification. Um, whereas a person from in town, you just want somebody who's. Intelligent and willing to work, right, because they can get certified.
Correct, I mean, so let's say, let's say you have three open spots. My three open spots right now, the first position to fill, you can fill with anyone. You can fill them, you just pick the most qualified person, resident or not resident, you just pick the most qualified person. Certifications would be a consideration that like you do anything, like you do anything whatsoever. And again, I'm not prepared to talk about detail and certifications, I put subjective qualifications here, not certifications in the language you just read. Second position, same thing, on the third position, you'd have to give the preference to that, to that Sherburne resident. And basically, if that Sherburne resident meets what we consider qualified, then essentially we obligated to give them. If we add objective certification onto that, um, then anyone would have to get those by then. But again, I want to talk to people before I start, I, I don't. I'm not an expert in these certifications, if you want to call it Nancy yet on the thing, or uh Wendy and the thing right now, but I just want to be fair to them, because I've just. Left a phone message with Wendy and she gave me a text back, like that's pretty much all the communication we have, I don't think it's fair to put her on the spot.
No, no, I think.
I agree, but uh, if, when you use the word qualified. Uh, that's, that's a pretty uh nebulous term until you make some, provide some sort of examples. Of what would be acceptable as qualification.
Well, the subjective language I put in there is basically background in one of the following, finance, law, government, real estate appraisal and art construction. That's what I put, that's what I put in, that's in the language I read.
Okay.
So that's, that's still subjective, it's still subjective in there, it doesn't say you have to have a blah, 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 you know.
Yeah, 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 but that's, that's what I was getting at, you know, you read it kind of fast and I didn't hear.
Oh, sorry, that's how he's doing.
Okay.
So I, I just want to know at least the intent of board, if you, if you, you still don't like this, you want to kill it, but I took, well, I took out the recruiting thing, I took out a lot of things about like. You know, you have to do it, and I, I think I added some, some, some flexibility in there.
Yeah, I think you made it much more implementable is how I'd summarize it. So uh, I don't, I think what you've done is fine, I don't have any uh. Comments, I think you're going in the right direction, we can discuss it on the second uh.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it on the second after we've had a chance to discuss it with Wendy, I, that's the person I really want to get an idea of. How she feels on it.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, is that all the possibly other articles you have?
That's all I got.
All right, does anyone else have any possibly other articles? So um.
Uh, Jeff, just a heads up, uh, the planning board uh hearing, um, the solar bylaw. Was, is listed as last week, uh, but actually they uh continued it. Until their next meeting, which is next week, so just so people know.
So it's next Tuesday night.
Right.
When it is, they actually had it, but they weren't uh letting people ask questions then, I think it was more the presentation, so I talked to Chris Owen at length Wednesday morning. So this, this coming Tuesday night is the um. Hearing for the zoning uh.
Right, I just wanted to heads up.
By law change that's in the warrant. Probably be a lengthy meeting, I don't know, it's kind of a crazy complicated, they've got. Eight or ten pages of uh material, so they've done a very thorough job. Where they're trying to, they're trying to prepare us so that we're not. Um, you know, having the developer approach us, so we don't have any way to handle it, now we'll have some rules of the road to know how to deal with it, so I think. They've really done a good job in making us not be flat footed. Anybody else have any comment on that? Okay, so we're down to, does anyone have a select board report? No select board reports, I gave one in executive session, but I'll give it against this, there are a few other people here, the library looks great, I walked through for about a half hour this afternoon and talked to the staff. You know, the, the children's wing is really almost completely outfitted, it's really exceptional and uh. They really made progress in other parts of the library too, so. Um, they, they've been um. You utilize the time extremely well, and I think the kids are really gonna be excited about the children's wing, it's. Just some of the features it has really come to life um, uh, when you walk through it, so. There's clap space, they're, they're gonna have a, Diane told me the dog that, you know, we have Wes, the uh. Uh, uh, support dog, the police department has, he can come and bring the dog to the library and have kids. Read to the dog or do something, so they're gonna do some really cool things. So I just want to be encouraging about the library. Does anyone else have it? No other select board reports? Very none, Jeremy, do you have any uh TA reports?
Yes, thanks Jeff, yeah, I have a handful, um. So um, was there somebody that was?
No, the.
Okay.
You're good, I don't think it's Paul never dialed back in, so I don't know where he went, but anyway, you can go ahead.
I think it's him on the phone, by the way, it might be him on the phone.
Yeah, I didn't know, is that you, oh, seven, four?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the phone because like, I didn't have internet, so I'm listening and. And apologize to everybody, uh.
Oh, all right.
But the internet, the net storm got, got clobbered down here, so I haven't been able to.
Verizon guy was.
Disconnected.
Yeah, when Verizon fiber optic doesn't work, just go copper.
Yep, that's what I'm doing.
So uh, uh, go ahead, Jeremy, sorry for interrupting.
Thank you, um, yeah, just a handful of updates uh and reports. Uh, regarding the FY twenty four budget, I have an update for you, a positive uh update. Uh, we've received for uh our health insurance and employee benefits, uh, our. We have the final estimate from Maya, who's the, you know, the agency that provides the, the health insurance package for the, the community. Uh, we originally carried a nine percent increase in that budget line. We've uh recently heard that our final estimate provided by Maya will be a one percent increase. So that's a reduction of about a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in that proposed budget line, so just wanted to relay that good news. Uh, regarding the, the budget and how we're making out. Um, a couple opportunities have come up that I wanted to share with the board, um. Recently, uh, the Chair of the Board of Health and uh Jeff, uh, your Chair. Uh, signed a letter to, a, a letter of commitment to participate in a regional public health district. Uh, that's, it's uh led by the town of Needham. Needham is, is slated to be sort of the, the regional lead for this grant program, they've received grant funding that funds a full-time position that will oversee. The, these regional services. Um, and have re- have received funding to actually help scope out what these public health services may be. Um, it's a safe, of the State Action for Public Health and Excellence Program. Um, and over the coming year, uh, they'd be working with our local Board of Health to, to look at what shared. Regional services that, that could be provided through this. Uh, the towns that are participating currently are Needham, Dover, Medfield and now Sherburne. Um, this grant and this program can't be used to reduce the current level of funding that we provide for public health. But could be used to, to provide additional services at, at a, you know, shared throughout this, this, this network, so. It, it's kind of an intriguing opportunity to look at regionalization of, of some aspects of public health. Um, they're gonna be focusing on environmental health first, uh, looking at like uh food establishments, Title Five, environmental health. Aspects of, of public health. Um, another opportunity that's, that's come up, uh, the town of Medfield has approached us. To look into uh sharing some services related to our Conservation Commission. They've had a difficulty uh hiring a conservation agent just like Sherburne, so. They're interested in pursuing some opportunities there to see if there's anything that. Um, you know, we, we can do together to make that position more attractive, more attractive to the market. Uh, I've spoken with both co-chairs Courtney Eck and Michael Lester, and they're interested in, in pursuing more and, and learning more, so. Next stage is there would be a meeting with the town of Medfield, their town administrator, along with their, their chairs of uh the Conservation Commissions. Um, to, to get the conversation going. Um, again, it, it would be over the coming months that we would scope something out, um, see if something fits.
That'd be great, that's really good.
Um, let's see, update on the Finance Director position, so that job advertisement was posted January twenty third. We have an initial deadline for applicants of February twenty fourth, um. And um, so that, that process is moving forward, so we should have. Um, you know, a handful of applicants to, to vet with, um, you know, the, the, the small working group.
Good.
See. Um, update on Silverwood Farm and Dobbin Brook Road. Uh, we had a site visit a, a couple weekends ago with Conservation Commission folks, Sean, Jeff and I. Um, to, to look at the, the area around Dobbin Brook Road and the drainage area. We've done some record research, I had to do a, a bunch of research just to find out, um, you know, so the history and, and the backgrounds, the Conservation Commission staff pulled out. The records and I've gone through them. Um, Public Works provided a fair amount of rec- uh records and, and historical information. The next step for me would be to, to reach out and meet with folks from Silverwood Farm, which uh we plan to do in the coming weeks. A bit of an update on. There's, there was a potential release from the MWRA Subbury Aqueduct. Um, on February sixth, uh, was noted that was some discolored water that was in Course Brook. Uh, flowing into, possibly flowing into Coolidge, uh, Course Brook, and flowing into the culvert under Coolidge Street. Um, the MWRA was notified, they've sent out folks to do some testing and investigations, we haven't gotten the results back from the MWRA as of yet. Uh, the, the local Conservation Commission and Boards of Health in Sherburne and Natick were both notified, so they're aware. Uh, but we're awaiting some more information back from the MWRA as far as, you know, was it some sort of discharge and if so, what, what was it? Uh, some more information to come on that.
How was it first uh noticed, or who, 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 who observed it?
Sean did, um, I think he was driving by and he noticed Course Brook running a little muddy, a little dirt, a little dark and brown. Um, and looked into it further and um.
Good, Sean, thank you, Sean.
Uh, just wanted to give a little update. Oh, Sean?
No, he's not, I don't think he's gonna say anything, but.
I'm here.
Just trying to embarrass him, you know, that's my job, my, my other job. I interrupted your flow.
You do it well.
I do, I know, you get even.
Uh, just a follow-up from the weekend of February fourth, the power outage and the very cold weekend. You know, I just wanted to, to thank our Public Safety and Public Works first responders for the, you know, their, all their efforts during that. That, that weekend and, and thank the. that, that weekend and, and thank the other town staff that came in and assisted with setting up the warming center that we established at town hall. And the folks that did, uh, staff that reached out to and to check on folks throughout the community. Um, just wanted to, um, express my thanks for, for all of that, their work. Um, as a follow-up to that weekend, uh, I've met with the chiefs and Sean, uh, and we've had some conversations with ever source, um, and have reached out as well to Verizon. Um, throughout the weekend and afterwards Verizon has been responsive, um, and, and did, we, we're, we're, uh, responsive through the event. Verizon has, has not been as responsive. Uh, unfortunately for Sherburne Verizon is the pole owner and they own all the utility poles and are responsible for setting or resetting utility poles that, that need, uh, work. Uh, and ever source electric is the electrical provider. So the two of them have to coordinate should a utility pole get broken or knocked down and um, yeah, there, there may be some opportunity to, for, to better that coordination. So we've requested a meeting of, of both, uh, ever source and Verizon together with us to talk about a bit more of, of the events of that weekend and to see where there could be some improvements. Um, so hopefully after that meeting, we'll have some more to report, um, on, on sort of an after action and, and things that, that those utility companies may do differently next time around. We did hear however.
Big obstacle. I'm glad you're doing that. That was a pretty big obstacle. Verizon, as everybody's read, they've been really, um, you know, budget cutting and axing employees, you know, so they're, they're downsizing.
Uh, we did hear good news that however, ever source.
George, was you, George and Marion had their hands up. Is that in addition to this particular item?
This is, this is on that item.
Okay, go ahead, George.
If, if I can add to what Jeremy's saying.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add, just so people know, and I probably, there's a lot of people on this call who know this. There's a lot of people still dealing with a lot of problems from that. There were a lot of burst pipes. A lot of people had personal property damage and, and damage to their homes related to that storm. I called Ray Rennie here today because I had a little plumbing issue that I wanted him to come over and he's just like, I am still dealing with so many burst pipes. I don't know when I can get to you because mine was urgent. So it's just and a, a lot of people I've talked to who lost power did get burst pipes. So it wasn't just that one night issue for a lot of people.
No, I haven't had heat for two weeks, George.
Oh, no. So, yeah, I know, I know.
At one point, thirty percent of the homes in Sherburne were, were without power, which was incredible. It was the most in the, the whole, um, Commonwealth at, at that point.
But George makes a very strong point. There's a resident on, uh, uh, um, Main Street who had their entire living room ceiling and collapsed from water.
Yeah.
This is, it's, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on. You call and they'll say, okay, we can come February twenty first.
But I do have to say ever source was good. Last weekend, we had another power outage over here on Whitney and we heard, I heard some pops and they were, I got in touch with Zach just so I could hear, uh, to let him know what was going on and they were here and the power was back on in three hours. I mean, it wasn't a cold night. So, but it was just nice that I think ever source has actually gotten a lot better about their responsiveness.
Absolutely.
And ever source wasn't a problem with this response. It really was Verizon kind of behind it.
No, exactly.
Yep. So Marion, you had your hand up also.
I, I do on the same subject, but a little different, uh, aspect of it. Uh, you mentioned that, uh, a warming center was set up, which was great. I mean, I think that's the first time since I've lived here that we need to have a warming center. But it occurred to me that night that you set up the warming center that, uh, a, a tremendous number of houses were without heat. Yes. There were a tremendous number of houses in Sherburne that still did have heat.
Yes.
And as long as, as many as, you know, a thousand houses still do have heat. Why do we not? And I don't know how this would be organized. Why do we not have a voluntary signup of, uh, people who are willing to take in another Sherburne resident in the event of an emergency? Because, you know, you make a warming center in town hall, it's really not very comfortable. You can't go and sleep there. Can't cook there. On the other hand, we have a lot of people in town who would be willing to open their homes in such an emergency. And I, I was just suggesting as a preliminary thought that, uh, we try to organize something around that. For the next
Yeah, I think there would be a challenge, you know, we're not good at organizing. This is one problem, but the, the other thing that we encountered with the warming center was most people now either have a mobile phone or their home phone is coming through their, um, cable contract, like my, I have a Fios contract, which gives me all of Verizon's services. But when they lost power, they lost their home phone. So you, uh, she, I don't think she's still, still on here. Sue Kelleher and Diane called every single senior citizen that's on the mailing list of the COA, but you could only reach a small percentage because their home phones were not operating.
So there's Yeah, there, there are barriers to this.
Yeah.
But I think the concept is still good.
We, we could maybe, I think this sort of, uh, what, what, what Jeremy described is kind of a, what I call a lessons learned session is what you can do to, because we could, you know, we sort of, I actually went up and opened the, uh, uh, warming center, um, initially, and we had, you know, Zach got donuts and pizza, but you know, it's part of contingency planning process. So you just, you do it when you have an incident.
I just am suggesting that we could have something a little organized in advance.
Yeah, yeah.
Advantage of people, you know, we have a lot of generous people in town with big houses.
Yeah, yeah.
Still have heat. Why not?
Sure. I, I'm happy to bring that up to the, the chiefs. We can, we can kick that around. Thanks, Marion.
Uh, go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess one, one outcome of this, I'm not sure it was an outcome, but we, we got some further detail from ever source electric that they do have some plans to do some upgrades in, in the community this coming construction season. In particular, the electrical feed that comes from Dover via Bridge Street and Farm Road, um, coming up to Route twenty seven or, or South Main Street. Uh, they do have plans, um, to upgrade, replace the existing utility poles and, and replace the, the overhead wires, um, to make a bit more, uh, reliable, uh, connection that way. So they, they hope to start, I think they have a little bit of permitting to do, um, and there may be some, um, some branches and trees that might need to be cut to, to accommodate the new, new wires, but, um, that, that could be something that ever source electric is going to pursue this coming season. So hopefully that provides a little bit more redundancy and maybe less of an opportunity for this to happen again. Um, really what's needed is another feed for Medfield from the south to, to really feed that area town.
Hmm.
You know, we'll, we'll work on that. Um, another update, I guess, or, uh, advanced notice is that the, the Commonwealth and their, their contractor is planning to replayer and replace the, uh, the crossing surface for the rail crossing on Route twenty seven, uh, North Main Street. And then they're also going to be adding safety gates. At, at this point, they're planning to do that work, um, the second weekend of April, uh, school vacation, which is the weekend of April twenty second. Would be work throughout the weekend and they'd have traffic detoured around that area through, through the duration of the work uh, to install a new crossing service to make it smoother. And also that the gates to make it a safer crossing. So pedestrians and vehicles would, would have a gate to, to warn them that our train's coming. So those are great improvements that are coming. Um, and during that work, there is, there's actually a great opportunity for the community to replace. Uh, there's a, uh, water pipe that actually is the fire service or fire suppressing service, uh, for the town campus area that goes under the rail, um, at that location. And it's, it's fairly old at this point and it's in a, we have some concern about the condition of the concrete pipe that the water, uh, water pipe goes through. Um, and there's an opportunity here during the work to upgrade this crossing surface to install a new modern, um, um, sleeve that could accommodate that fire protection on, uh, piping. So there would be a lot of great cost savings to do it coordinated with this work. So we're, we're exploring that, that opportunity uh, to, to do that while the opportunity's ripe. Um, and I guess finally, um, I've been working, there was a couple of items that were sort of on my to-do list for the first couple of months here. Um, and, uh, I have some drafts that I'd like to distribute, start to distribute of town organizational chart uh, to help spur conversation, um, to, to uh, on that topic. Um, and to start, uh, sending some years, some draft information to help facilitate some discussions on for the coming year. So yeah, that's the detailed org chart. Uh, so the pre-screen, the, the, the draft.
It's, it's awesome. I'm glad, uh, you did it. And I, um, I think we should have this as an agenda item. I'm not sure we can judge which session, but I think we should discuss it. It's really, you did an exceptional job. You know, we gave you some ideas, but you took it and ran with it and did way more than I envisioned. And, and with Diane's help, uh, I think it's going to be, um, helpful is concurrent with us upgrading our website. So it's going to also help residents how, know how to navigate town better. I bet too, if we have a scaled down version and a website version. So this was terrific. But let's do a formal, uh, introduction. You can send it, but, but I'd like to, to walk through it with people. So.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I'm, you know, I could send around the draft and that might bring up some questions. If anybody has some interim questions, you could reach out direct, but
Yeah.
Let's Um, and you know, relatedly, I've been working on trying to help, uh, facilitate setting some, um, discussing and setting some goals for the board and myself over the coming year. So like to, to get that draft information out and, and also set that as a, uh, an item for your discussion.
Yeah, I think that's a good, maybe we could do that one after town meeting, you know, once we kind of get the dust settled on that and the warrant and but you did, did a great job on this org chart. It really shows all the, there's several layers, shows all the boards and committees and which ones are appointed, which ones are elected. It's really a great resource.
Thank you. Well, I've got, thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else have anything? Is that all you have, Jeremy? No, I mean, oh, I mean, yeah, you had, you had a good update, but you know what I mean? I didn't mean it that way. No other updates, I guess. So, um, do, do I, I think it was a good meeting. Um, do I have a motion, uh, to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
And Paul on the phone.
Hi.
All right. I might as well. Thank you, team. This was terrific. And thank you Diane for helping to herd the cats. You did a great job too.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Night.
Ciao.